Yeah, how did they know what's gonna break down? What is it?
Yeah. Well, we, uh, no, we just had what was in the minutes from Robin. They are going to start a public education thing this spring, but they, and they always have traps, you know? So, well, we talked, talking about the very, yes, and Ellen, and Gary, Gary, but Robin. Also, really, there's not gonna be much done, except for the brochures in this spring. I think, she called me this morning, is this the help?
Yes, not gonna make it to tonight.
Oh.
How are you going on?
Um, I, I think all things considered, like, John Beer, like, are, so Louis puts over ten of them, cutting in specifically.
Is that that long?
John Beer came in the middle, in the actual voter price, but if you're gonna break your best pair, if you're not taking little bit of, if you're looking for a picture, consider to replace it, but here she did.
Now, which one is Janet?
Uh, Triple A.
Triple A.
Please rise and join me for the presentation of the colors by American Legion Hellgate Post Number Twenty-Seven.
Column right, pardon. Column left, pardon. Detail, oh, right page. Be that, um...
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, pardon. At trail, left phase, left column, march.
I'll call this meeting of the Missoula City Council to order. The record will reflect that all the council members are present except Councilman Sampson and Councilman Harrison. Are there any changes to the minutes of the last meeting? If not, we'll accept the minutes as presented. We have three special presentations this evening. The first is a presentation by Bob Watke. Mr. Watke.
Thank you, Mayor Chemus, council members, for this opportunity to, uh, make this presentation in front of you this evening. Each year, the Missoula Area Chamber of Commerce allows its, uh, president to make an award called the George Award, and the George Award is presented to someone who didn't let George do it, he did it himself. And this year's recipient was out of town when, at a, at a meeting the night of the chamber banquet, when this award is usually presented, so we'd like to do it tonight, uh, as it goes to Bob Hermes, who represents the business community very well on the city council, as well as giving countless hours to, um, Little Guy Rassling Program in Missoula and, and our youth, as well as a Little Gisly Football Program, where I might say he coached the winning team this year. So, uh, again, the Chamber of Commerce would like to thank Bob for all he's done for the youth in our community, as well as the service to the city council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watke, and congratulations to Bob for a well-deserved honor. The next presentation is by Pam Mota of Triple A Insurance.
Both Lonnie and Mary Cheryl are going to preface my award a little bit.
Thank you, Pam. My name is Lonnie Parson, and I'm coordinator of Missoula's Traffic Safety Program. And while the Traffic Safety Program focuses on all, uh, aspects of traffic safety, over the past couple of years, we've had a, a real strong emphasis on pedestrian safety. And one of the reasons for that is we, um, became a recipient of a pedestrian, uh, safety grant about, oh, fourteen months ago. And the reason we received that grant, unfortunately, uh, I have to admit, is because we had an over-representation here in Missoula for numbers of pedestrian accidents. Uh, so it's really encouraging to be participating tonight in a pedestrian safety award from Triple A. At this time, I'd like to, um, introduce Mary Cheryl Hall, who has been serving as that pedestrian grant project manager. Thanks.
Thank you, Lonnie. I just wanted to take this opportunity that, to, uh, let, alert the council and the public that one of the reasons that we were recipients of the pedestrian grant is that we do have an active traffic safety task force. And the real impetus of the task force is that it combines engineering with education with enforcement. And so with the three working together, uh, we really are proud that, uh, Missoula indeed qualified for this year's award. Pam?
Uh, the first recorded traffic safety, or traffic fatality in the United States was in New York City in eighteen ninety-nine, and it was a pedestrian. Um, today, pedestrian fatalities account for approximately sixteen percent of all the fatalities. Triple A began developing our safety program in nineteen thirty-seven. Since then, the population of the U.S. has increased by a hundred and twenty percent, and auto travel has soared to over seven hundred percent, but pedestrian fatalities have decreased by fifty-four percent. When Triple A evaluates a city for this award, it looks not only to the number of injuries and fatalities, but also as to what the city is doing in the areas of public awareness, education, traffic engineering, and enforcement. On behalf of Triple A, I am delighted to present this award to Missoula and to you. Thank you.
I, in turn, if I may, would like to ask Mayor Chemus to accept this award on behalf of residents of Missoula, as it's the residents who really earned this award. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you who have made this award possible, and please keep up the good work. We appreciate it. The next presentation is to William Boggs, and it begins with a proclamation. Whereas William Boggs has worked earnestly to serve the Missoula community for the past fourteen years as a member of the city council, Missoula City County Health Board, and chairman of the Missoula Citizens Advisory Committee on Open Space, and whereas William Boggs created the concept of a conservation bond to fund preservation of open spaces, and whereas William Boggs worked tirelessly through three separate elections campaigning for passage of an open space bond, whereas William Boggs served as chair of the Citizens Committee on Open Space for the past decade generously affording this community its devotion, commitment, and legal expertise, and whereas William Boggs has been responsible for the lasting preservation of Missoula's most treasured natural amenities, and whereas William Boggs offers Missoula his lifetime devotion to further the preservation of our cherished open space, now therefore I, Daniel Chemus, mayor of the city of Missoula in the state of Montana, do hereby proclaim Monday, October twenty-first, to be William Boggs Day in the city of Missoula. And to make a further presentation, I would like to call on two council members who served with Mr. Boggs, Ken Lucine and Cass Chinskey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, city council members. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the Citizens Open Space Advisory Committee. There are numerous members of the committee present, uh, as well as former members of the committee, to commemorate Mr. Boggs' service to this community. William Boggs has lived in Missoula the past twenty-one years. After growing up in Washington, D.C., William received his BA degree in philosophy from the University of Chicago, and his MA in philosophy from American University. In nineteen seventy-eight, he graduated from U of M Law School. His legal work for, focuses on criminal law. Additionally, William has argued more than fifty cases before the Montana Supreme Court. Since nineteen seventy-one, William has worked continuously for the Bitterroot National Forest as a helitack and interregional firefighter, and as a fire lookout on three different mountains. William served Ward Three on the Missoula City Council from nineteen seventy-seven through nineteen eighty-one. During that period, he was also a member of the City County Health Board for three years. For the past decade, William Boggs has chaired the Missoula Citizens Advisory Committee on Open Space. This occasion today is meant to honor these past fourteen years of continuous service by William Boggs to Missoula. We are particularly commemorating William's outstanding contribution toward open space preservation. William Boggs in nineteen seventy-nine originated the concept of a half-million-dollar open space conservation bond. Missoula voters on three occasions overwhelmingly approved the bond, but because the turnout was not of its forty percent requirement, uh, only in the nineteen eighty election did the sufficient forty percent turnout occur. Mr. Boggs was the central coordinator in those three citywide conservation bond passage campaigns. All of you in city government can well imagine the energy required to run three consecutive citywide campaigns. After passage of the bond in nineteen eighty, William composed the entire comprehensive open space ordinance which the council adopted. For the past decade, since his departure from the city council and until his recent resignation, William Boggs has served as the chairman of the Citizens Open Space Advisory Committee. During his tenure, the city received William Boggs countless hours of legal expertise free of charge. Over this past decade, William has been instrumental in shepherding all of the following lands into the protective public domain. Mount Sentinel, the south side of John Tool Riverfront Park, the Hellgate Canyon, and Mount Jumbo. Not long before his tragic death, our late mayor, John Tool, gave me a manuscript excerpt from a chapter in his history book on Missoula, Red Ribbons. John affectionately characterized four of us on that progressive council era of the early eighties. He especially heaped praise on William Boggs for his visionary leadership and contribution toward open space preservation. In conclusion, we today, and all our children's children, owe William Boggs much gratitude for his vision and the creation of open space preservation. While William is no longer on the committee, he has indicated he will be always working toward open space preservation in Missoula in one format or another. For that, I am also gratified. Finally, in a note toward the future of open space in, in Missoula is in order. We are at a vital crossroad. The five-hundred-thousand dollars exceedingly well-invested in land acquisition is now virtually spent. Our citizen committee is once again revitalized and vibrantly pursuing a new plateau to extend the already outstanding achievement of the past decade. The Open Space Committee has invited about a dozen citizen groups and agencies to join us in our new ambitions. First, we want to develop a community-wide definition of open space. Then we shall conduct a comprehensive inventory of prospective open urban space lands, or urban open space lands. From that base, we shall formulate a new acquisition program, one that will likely include another campaign for open space funding. With pride and gratitude for the past decade, we look toward the future with renewed hope and excitement. To present the, uh, award to William Boggs on behalf of the Missoula's and Citizens Advisory Committee on Open Space is Cass Chinskey. Cass has also been on the committee for the past decade. Cass, too, has been an instrumental force in the open space program from its inception. It is fitting that Cass present this commemoration to William Boggs.
Ken, that was excellent. I don't think it could be said any better. William Boggs was one of the most creative forces on the council of the late seventies and early eighties, and did most definitely provide the leadership and the creativity to develop a urban open space program in this community. And I can't think of anybody more deserving of, of this award, this recon, recognition tonight than, than William Boggs. Let me read to you, um, what the, what is on this plaque. "The Missoula Open Space Advisory Committee recognizes William Boggs for extraordinary contribution to the conservation and protection of open space in the Missoula Valley. William Boggs' visionary actions will serve for generations to come."
William, would you come forward, please?
I, I deeply appreciate the appreciation. And I, I deeply appreciate the members of the Open Space Committee, living and dead, with whom I've served over that ten years. It's been, um, it's been a great privilege to know and work with all of them. And, um, if I might, and I'm going to follow the three-minute limit, I was reflecting about that ten years of work. And I, in thinking about it, I thought about the fact that there's sometimes perceived to be a tension between human needs and the needs of the earth. And thinking about that, I was struck by the fact that in all the traditions of mankind, the features of the natural landscape have been so closely identified with the divine. And just to give a couple of examples that are most well-known to you from the Psalms, "In his hand are the deep places of the earth; the strength of the hills is his also; the sea is his, and he made it; and his hands formed the dry land. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; he leadeth me beside the still waters; he restoreth my soul. I lift up mine eyes unto the hills, from whence cometh my health." One of the greatest of human needs is to keep good and pure relations with the divine and with the sacred. And because that's so, also one of the greatest of human needs is to keep good and pure relations with things most closely identified with the divine, and that is the earth. And there's another human need that's almost equally important with that, and that's to experience and participate in the continuity of the generations and of the human soul. And when that unknown psalmist thousands of years ago lifted his eyes unto the hills, and when we here in Missoula lift our eyes unto our hills, we are seeing the same thing, and in that very important sense, are the same person. That hill to which we lift up our eyes is the bridge across thousands of years of human living. And so when we work to preserve the earth, one of the things we're really asking when we do that is to be together in love with all those who've gone before and lifted their eyes unto those hills, and with all those who will go after us. Through the love of the earth, they are we, and we are they, forever. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, William, once again, for your outstanding service to Missoula. We turn now to items for final consideration. Looks as if everything has been held in committee that might be up for final consideration this evening. With that, then, we'll go to comments from citizens. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on items other than those that have been set for public hearings. We restrict this to three minutes per person, and we would ask that you state your name and address before beginning your remarks. This is Kristofferson.
I'm Joan Kristofferson, nine-ten Ronald. I'm here primarily for a report from MCAT, and I am also going to ask the council why it is that, uh, a, a report from MCAT comes in as public comment, because we really are part of your budget, and you are involved in the operation of MCAT.
If I can just answer that, Ms. Kristofferson, and not take it away from your three minutes, I don't think that there's any special reason. I think that MCAT began making these presentations at this time, and nobody said that they have to do it now. It would certainly be possible, and, and invited for you to make, um, written presentations, and those can be made through the chair of the, uh, of the Cable TV Committee. That would be another possibility. But we do appreciate the reports when they're made.
Yes, and I realize that it's a question that just has never been brought up, and that's why I brought it up. Uh, I told the, um, the MCAT board when I accepted this month's assignment to report to you that I would do this. The important item that, to report to you in any case is that, um, the National Federation of Local TV, of local cable programming held its convention here in September, and we appreciated, uh, the attendance of some of you from the council at some of those sessions. We appreciate very much the mayor's welcoming speech to the convention attenders, and we were glad to see our city tourney there, too, because of the various complications that, uh, MCAT represents in that department. We had a total of sixty-five registrants attending, and another forty-eight persons or so who participated coming and going, and, uh, we had also, um, about sixty members of the, uh, MCAT group in Missoula assisting in one way or another to make the convention a very pleasant and successful event. The, um, report for the month you have in your packets, and I will not, uh, press you to, uh, read those unless you are interested in asking any questions. Most of the conference was videotaped and will eventually be edited and is available for, um, attenders who, uh, came from as far away as Portland, if they wish to have copies. And it's available, of course, for anybody in Missoula who would like to reprieze or see for the first time what was going on at the conference. Unless there are any questions, I think that's as much of your time as I need this evening.
Thank you, Joan. And congratulations again to MCAT for having brought that convention to Missoula. Other public comment?
Hi, my name is Cindy Polinsky, and I'm an organizer with the United Healthcare Workers Union. Um, I'd like to pass out a copy of a resolution that will be referred to committee later tonight, if possible. Is that okay?
Certainly.
I'd just like to read the resolution, if that's okay.
That would be fine, although we will, um, have a chance to read the resolution later, um, so, but go ahead, as long as you can do it in three minutes, that's fine. So, but go ahead, as long as you can do it in three minutes, that's fine.
I'll try to do it fast.
Sure.
Whereas recognizing that the population of retirement-age people is the fastest-growing sector of the population, and that this sector of the population should be given quality health care and respectful treatment after making many contributions to society, and whereas recognizing that one out of every two people sixty-five years of age or older will spend some time in a nursing home, and whereas recognizing that nursing home workers provide the quality care, dignity, and respect that residents deserve, and that these workers receive poverty-level wages and no health insurance in many of Montana's nursing homes, and whereas recognizing that Sage, a Minnesota-based firm, owns four of Missoula's five nursing, five elderly care facilities, which has proven to be a very profitable operation and is in a position to grant wage and benefit increases and to bargain in good faith with its employees, and whereas the health instability of Missoula's economy is positively impacted by wage and benefit packages that exceed minimums established by the state and federal law, and whereas employees at Sage's Hillside Manor and Hillside Place are being represented by the United Healthcare Workers' Union Local 427, and these same workers are negotiating a contract this fall as their current contract expires on December 31st, and that these workers at Hillside Place and Hillside Manor seek a contract that creates a workplace environment that is both fair and dignified, and whereas recognizing that workers at two other Sage facilities, Village Senior Residence and Riverside Healthcare, attempted to obtain bargaining units at these facilities, and that workers have had unfair labor practice charges pending due to management error, harassment, and intimidation, and that the Labor Board recently ruled that workers at Riverside have the right to a new election. Now therefore be it resolved that we pledge our support in all efforts towards improving the lives of nursing home workers and nursing home residents, and urge the management at Hillside Manor and Hillside Place to effect a fair and equitable settlement in upcoming contract negotiations. Phew. So that will be, you know, referred to committee later on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there other public comment this evening?
Bill Houchen, 1101 South Third West. I come here tonight to thank you and the council, and specifically Al Sampson, who's not with us this evening, he's got the flu. I believe Jack Reedy was in on it. But it was through their direct intervention that Third Street is now completed. Because if they had not have intervened, we'd be in mud, and that's a fact. The day after I was at the council meeting the last time, people were very active. It was relatively Beehive outside with workers. However, Wednesday, Beehive was dead. No contractors, very few city workers, and come to find out, the contractor who had the concrete contract was permitted to go to one of five other jobs and leave that one unattended. Through Al's intervention, they came back within a few days, long hours and constant supervision, perhaps put them back on schedule. Friday, the job was completed, just three days before rain, and we would be in mud. So I personally want to thank Al, and I believe Jack was in on it, I don't know who else, for their effort in ensuring that this project come to its culmination. Because the very day of its culmination, things became very active for us and our business. Quite a few people came in just because the street was finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houchen.
My name is Bob Lovegrove. I live at 825 Parkview Way. I just wanted to take a minute to call your attention to a letter I hope is in your packet tonight if you haven't already seen it, which is a certified letter from Robert Mullendor making you aware of his intent to sell lots in the Far Views area up adjacent to Crestline. For those of you who weren't here, we worked hard to get something in return for Mr. Mullendor when he asked the city to give up open space without anything in return. The option to buy these two lots was all we got in return, as I recall. The city has sixty days to exercise that option, and because Far Views has no neighborhood park which allows for a pickup ballgame or tennis courts or anything like that, I think consistent with the mayor's interest in creating open space within the city and consistent with part of your agenda tonight, that acquisition and development of this park is definitely in the city's interests and would make a significant contribution to helping maintain the record that the city was recognized for for not having any pedestrian fatalities because right now the children on the Far Views have to cross Southwest Higgins to get to a ballfield and a tennis court. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Rice?
I don't have a question for Bob, but I do have a question. I don't have a copy of that letter. Does everybody else have it? Okay. Will we be getting it? Has anybody but, does anybody know what the status of it is?
We have received it in the mayor's office. We'll make copies available to you.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. McLaughlin?
That has been referred to your committee of conservation, Fred.
Any other citizen comment? Mr. Snodgrass? Any other citizen comment?
My name is Will Snodgrass, and I'm here tonight as spokesperson for Missoulians for Clean Environment. A few short months ago, Councilwoman Mike Craig wisely forewarned us about the probability of a massive pesticide industry media campaign aimed at defeating Missoula's right-to-know pesticide ordinance. Councilwoman Craig's foresight was accurate. The pesticide industry is now at work in Missoula, attempting to influence our election process to the benefit of that industry. According to the people who have contacted me personally, the pesticide industry has been and is currently conducting what is known as a push survey here in Missoula. In the process of conducting this survey, they have been telling Missoula citizens that the pesticides their industry uses are safe. These statements by the pesticide industry are a violation of law under the jurisdiction of the Federal Trade Commission. If you have received one of these phone push survey calls from the pesticide industry, you may call the Missoula City Attorney's Office, where I am sure you will be able to obtain information directing you to either the State Attorney General's Office or the Federal Trade Commission itself. I would urge anyone receiving such a push survey call to write down the statements made by the pesticide industry's phone worker for the record. The Montana Agribusiness Association is also at work in Missoula to the tune of approximately twenty to forty thousand dollars at this time, according to my source. They have been soliciting five-hundred-dollar donations around this state and calling for a massive telephone tree call-in program against the Missoula right-to-know pesticide ordinance. I believe Missoula voters want to know about behind-the-scenes industry activities, especially industry activities involving disinformation as it impacts the health of this community's children. Thank you very much.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Will, would you yield to a couple of questions?
Oh, sure, Larry.
Have you produced any television commercials espousing your viewpoint of this issue?
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely, yes. Have they aired?
Yes, they have.
Do you call that?
As you well know.
Yes, I well know that. Do you call that influencing the election process?
To the benefit of public health, yes.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comment?
Good evening. My name's Charles Stevenson. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you. Some time ago, to your credit, you had a meeting concerning open space, and you brought a gentleman in from Colorado that was active in planning the cities of Boulder and Denver, Colorado. When you, you know, I've got this letter here, and did you invite the county commissioners to that meeting?
We invited the representative of the county commissioners who has worked most on open space, Amy O'Hara, was invited to it. The commissioners themselves were not invited. There were many others in Missoula that we might have thought of inviting that we didn't.
I would think it would be appropriate to invite the county commissioners in an action like that because you look around us and most of the open space we have is in the county. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Stevenson, if I can just respond to that, I do very strongly believe that the county should be involved in discussions about open space. And in fact, I will be meeting with the commissioners later this week, and that's one of the agenda items that we will bring up with them. And they're not having been invited to that was in no way intentional, was at most an oversight.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other citizen comment? If there is none, we'll go on with our agenda. I want to thank all of the citizens who have participated in our meeting this evening. We have public hearings this evening on a number of resolutions. The first is on a resolution to levy a special assessment and tax upon all property situated within Special Improvement District Number 492, aka 492A of the city of Missoula, Montana, to defray the cost of making the improvements in Special Improvement District pursuant to Resolution Number 5193, creating said district. Is there any staff report on this? Mr. Sterns?
I can just do a quick one for all three. There are three resolutions on the public hearings tonight for three small special improvement districts. I'll just make introductory comments for this as well as for all. The first one, SID 492, is a one-block of alley paving in the University District. The second one, SID 496, is the paving of Tulip Lane up in the Rattlesnake for the street curb gutter and sidewalk improvements. And the third one is a one-block paving of Hillsdale Drive over off of West Broadway. They are fairly small in assessment level.
Is there any public comment on the first public hearing?
I am Jean Stevens. I live at 610 South Avenue East. I have sent letters expressing most of the following on September 13th, 1989, and on July 28th, 1991. These letters were addressed to the Public Works Department Engineering Division. As the owner of Lot 31 in the west half of Lot 30 in Block 3, Mount Sentinel Edition Number 4, my assessment of $607.64 is one of the lowest on the list of assessment for SID 492. I nevertheless protest this proposed SID. It is, in my opinion, a useless expenditure of money. I have seen and tried to drive through asphalt-surfaced alleys in Great Falls, Helena, and Missoula. A gravelled alley can be bladed at necessary intervals, whereas the surfaced alleys develop potholes, just as in Montana streets. Seldom are such potholes filled as the city crews are too busy maintaining streets. An example of such an alley is one parallel to Brooks on the north in the 100 block. It is full of potholes, of which only a few have been patched in the last five years. For drainage of rain and melting snow, the less asphalt, the better. Asphalt alleys are more prone to icy surfaces than gravel alleys in winter. There is much shade in an east-west alley because garages and fences are built so close. The low angle of the sun does not permit much melting. A gravel alley can drain what melting there is and provides a better surface for traction when needed. I think there are many ways to spend assessments than on this dubious project.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this resolution? If there is not, we'll close the public hearing. Next is a hearing on a resolution to levy a special assessment and tax upon all property situated within Special Improvement District Number 496 of the city of Missoula to defray the cost of making the improvements in Special Improvement District pursuant to Resolution Number 5071, creating said district. Any public comment on this resolution? If there is not, we'll close this public hearing. Next is a hearing on a resolution to levy a special assessment and tax upon all property situated within Special Improvement District Number 499 of the city of Missoula to defray the cost of making the improvements in the Special Improvement District pursuant to Resolution Number 5166, creating said district. Is there any public comment on this resolution? If not, we will close this public hearing. Next is a public hearing on Hurt First Edition Preliminary Platte. Staff report? Ms. Martins?
Thank you. Barbara Martins, Office of Community Development. Hurt First Edition is a 2.23-acre tract of land located south of South 7th Street West between Eaton and Kemp. Seventeen single-family homes are proposed, are currently under construction and near completion at this time. The uses which surround the proposed subdivision are also single-family residential. In April of this year, the Missoula City Council annexed the property in response to the owner's petition for annexation in order to obtain city sewer service. When the property was annexed, it became unzoned, and this parcel lost its county zoning of CR2, which allowed a maximum residential density of six dwelling units per acre. Immediately upon annexation, Mr. Hurt submitted a building permit application for a 36-unit apartment complex. The council held hearings on the proposed apartment complex and heard a substantial amount of opposition from the neighborhood. As a result of the opposition, Mr. Hurt revised his proposal to single-family dwellings. Another meeting was held before the council, and the majority of the public comment that was received was favorable. On May 20th of this year, the council gave zoning compliance approval to this project. And on the basis of that decision, Mr. Hurt received a building permit for the construction of the seventeen single-family homes in accordance with that site plan. The proposal is before you tonight for a public hearing because Mr. Hurt wishes to create individual lots for sale versus having a development for lease or rent. At its meeting on October 8th of this year, the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Hurt First Edition Preliminary Platte, subject to twelve conditions, and also recommended that a right-of-way with variance be granted. If you'd like me to read through those conditions and variances, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, they are in your packet.
Is there anyone who would like to have the conditions read? If not, we'll skip that. Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, unless you have questions, that's all I have.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone representing the applicant like to address the council? Mr. Ainsworth?
My name's Dick Ainsworth. I'm with Professional Consultants. I'm here representing Hurt Construction, the developer of this project. The developer is in agreement with the twelve conditions that the Planning Board recommended approval based upon, as we were at the Planning Board meeting. I have nothing more to say other than be here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ainsworth? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this matter? Any public testimony? If there is not, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go on now to a hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 9.62 of the Missoula Municipal Code entitled Discharging Weapons. By amending Section 9.62.030, MMC, making it unlawful for any person to commit the offense of disorderly conduct by knowingly disturbing the peace pursuant to the discharge of a firearm within three miles of the city limits in certain designated areas for purposes of excluding the exception for shotguns for bird hunting. the exception for shotguns for bird hunting purposes within the Bitterroot River Bottom near McClay's Bridge, and to create an exception for special deer shotgun hunts for deer damaging crops. Is there any staff report on this matter? If not, I'll ask for public comment.
Mayor Chemis, city council members. My name is Alice Austin, A-U-S-T-I-N. I live in Target Range. I speak as a member of the Blue Mountain O'Brian Creek Homeowners Association. City Ordinance 2546, regulating discharge of weapons within three miles of the city limits in certain designated areas, was passed in May 1987. It included an amendment permitting waterfowl shooting in the Bitterroot River Bottom between Buck House Bridge and the fishing access site at the west end of Spurgeon Road between September 1 and January 10. The Blue Mountain O'Brian Creek Homeowners are requesting that the right to shoot waterfowl in the specified area in the fall be removed from the ordinance. Our reasons for this request are as follows. The original petitioners for the ordinance were supported by the majority of the city council and by the county commissioners for public safety reasons. Since 1987, there has been an increase in public use of the area for recreation as well as addition of homes. The new boat launch, parking lot, and trails at McClay Flats are a part of this. The Western Montana Sports Medicine and Fitness Center has brought more people using both the road and McClay Flats. There are more fishermen and increased use of rafts and boats. The increased use means an increase in the need to protect public safety. And number two, the width of the river is less than the effective range of a shotgun. And the shooting has to be from a point below high watermark. Many of the original petitioners and of the petitioners for this change in the ordinance are hunters who take the position that they would not shoot in this section of the river because doing so is a threat to public safety. You will be hearing from some of them. Those of us who have riverbank property can and do observe that there aren't many ducks or geese in this stretch, nor is there a large number of hunters. So, not many would be deprived of hunting recreation were this area to be closed. We are asking for another change in the ordinance. It is a change that the Department of Fish, Wildlife, and Parks would like to see. Specifically, it is the inclusion of permission for special hunts. Special hunts are not related to waterfowl shooting but to control of deer overpopulation. They are conducted by FWNP when requested by a landowner and only on his property. They might be conducted using bow hunting or shotguns with slugs. One of the prominent arguments against any sort of shooting closure is that those asking for it are anti-hunting. If we are proposing allowing special hunts, I don't think we can be accused of being anti-hunting. Another request we have of city council is that if they approve the new form of the ordinance omitting fall shotgun shooting for waterfowl and including permission for special hunts, the change will become effective when and only when the Department of Fish, Wildlife, and Parks closes the request area to waterfowl shooting with shotguns September 1 to January 10. We ask this because the department controls the river bottom below the high watermarks. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Austin? Thank you.
I have copies for the council members of that.
Thank you. Is there any other public testimony on this matter? Mr. Stevenson.
Good evening. My name is Charles Stevenson, S-T-E-V-E-N-S-O-N. I live up O'Brian Creek and I'm a member of the Blue Mountain O'Brian Creek Homeowners I'm not opposed to hunting. I've, I'm a hunter myself for oh, 20-odd years now. And I don't think I would choose to hunt in that area because of the safety issues. I believe this area described is too close to houses and has too much activity in terms of people's comings and goings in the McClay Flats area especially. I think it's real important that the public should have the right to feel secure in knowing that they are safe when walking in that area or adjacent to the river any time of year. I've got a statement, or a written statement from the county commissioners, the board of county commissioners. Says, Dear Al and city council members, we have written in support of the proposed changes in city ordinance Number 2546 relating to discharge of firearms within the three-mile of the city limits in certain designated areas. The petitioners make a good point when they ask that waterfowl hunting between September 1 and January 10 is prohibited. The increased population and use of the entire river as recreational area would certainly, would certainly in our minds call for prudent restrictions against the discharge of firearms along the river, including the hunting of waterfowl. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, sincerely, Board of County Commissioners. And I've got a copy of these letters for you. Okay, and there's another couple other letters. They were written, one from the University of Montana by Sheila Sterns. Says, RE Ordinance 2546, as a substantial landowner in the Fort Missoula area, in the Bitterroot River Bottom, we support the petitioners who have asked for to prohibit shooting in and near this area in all seasons, including waterfowl hunting season. In fact, our security office has asked, it is my understanding that the area be considered is between Buck House Bridge and Kelly Island. If you have any questions about our position or our concerns, please call me, Mr. James Todd, Vice President for the Administration and Finance. Okay, we have one other letter. It's from the Missoula Vocational Technical Center, to whom it may concern. The discharge of firearms in or near the adjacent, adjacent to the Missoula Vocational Technical Center buildings and grounds is an issue of concern. Montana Vocational Technical Center, as a post-secondary educational institution, must be sensitive to and concerned itself with the welfare of its student population. The discharge of firearms in the river bottom near the center property has potential for creating a situation that can be dangerous to the students attending the center. For this reason, there is an opposition to the discharge of firearms in the adjacent river bottom area. Sincerely, Dennis Limram. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll distribute this. I believe you have the last two letters. You should have letters in the packet and I'll distribute these other ones from the county commissioner.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Mr. Bonesack.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dean Bonesack and I reside in the Blue Mountain area. I also am in support of no shooting ordinance in that area. I own approximately a quarter mile of the river frontage along the Bitterroot River. With the amount of recreationalists that have increased in the area and that river corridor and the Blue Mountain Road, I feel it's a necessity for the safety of these recreationalists as well as those who drive the roads and those who live in the area. I would further support any necessary requests for special permit hunting as required by any property owner for the alleviation of crop damage. I fully understand this ordinance is going to be very, very tough to enforce, although it does give the legal teeth for those blatant abusers of the, blatant abuser of the hunting rights and use of the firearms in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Dean? Thank you. Is there any other public testimony?
My name is Bob Erwin. I'm general manager of the Missoula Country Club. I'm here representing the Board of Directors of the Missoula Country Club. We fully support an ordinance prohibiting the use of shotguns along the Bitterroot River. We have one green probably less than 15 yards from the edge of the river, plus our driving range has a range, has about 100 yards of frontage along the river. This driving range is also a popular sledding area for our members and their families in the wintertime. We fully support this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other testimony?
My name is Gail Miller and I live now at 1721 South 4th West in Missoula, but I've spent most of my life living out in the Target Range Orchard Homes area. And I would like to voice my support in favor of the changes in Ordinance 2546 for many of the reasons people have already expressed. I frequently hike with my dogs along the Bitterroot River out at Fort Missoula and out on McClay Flats. And I would like to make a note that McClay Flats was especially created as a recreation area for families and children and wheelchair people. And it just would not be very safe if the shooting was allowed in this area when this area was specially created for people that are handicapped and small children. And I would just like to say that I am in favor of this ordinance and I am not anti-hunting, but I just feel that since there are so many people that live out in the Orchard Homes Target Range area, it would just definitely be a real safety factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Further testimony?
My name is Dave Shealy and I'm with the River Park Homeowners Association. We have nine homes on the river right by McClay's Bridge. And we also have a three-acre common property that the families use to recreate at. I can't understand why people would want to hunt, which we feel were sort of in town, in town. You wouldn't hunt on the second hole of the Larchmont Golf Course and you wouldn't hunt through Green Hill Park. Slewing ducks in front of houses cannot be much sport. We've had boats go by our houses where hunters are reeling around, shooting ducks from the boat. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and I don't think that this kind of hunting should be allowed.
Thank you. Any further testimony?
My name is Eileen Ort and I'm a resident in the Hidden Heights Property Owners Group. And I'd just like to relate to two instances that have occurred to me and one instance to a neighbor. Last Monday evening, about 7:00, I went over to McClay Flat to take a quick walk through the walking area. It was getting dark. I walked along, probably a third of the way down the pathway, and I was met by a woman and her teenage son. We exchanged pleasantries. The evenings were getting dark very quickly, et cetera. I went on my way, saw many deer in the McClay Flat area. By the time I came back to the parking lot at McClay Flat, it was dark. I wasn't concerned, I had a flashlight, but a car was waiting for me. And it was the woman and her son who had become very concerned because I was the last woman walking through the McClay Flat area. And as they had departed the McClay Flat area at the end of their walk, they observed a hunter in camo going into the McClay Flat area with a bow and arrow. They were concerned for my safety. I thanked them and I went on my way. But I was a little surprised that hunting was this close to the river within McClay Flat, albeit with a bow and arrow. The second case was in early September. We live directly on the river and all our windows look onto the river. I heard shots in the morning, probably 9:00. Didn't pay any, much attention but was concerned because they seemed a little early in the hunting season. So, I called the park, the fishing game, to find out what the regulations are for shooting. The warden has told me that it was for upland game, game birds, and mourning doves. Fine, that clarified it for me, but within a half hour, I heard more shots, quite a flurry of shots. But in the meantime, we had had several fishermen come down the river in rafts, hunting, I mean, not hunting, fishing. Then the shots went off again. So, I went to the windows and looked out and I saw hunters on private property above the high watermark, shooting. And they had, they went over and picked up two very large birds out of where they had flopped down next to them. They shook them, kicked them, and then threw them into the river. So, I again called the warden. I sound like I'm the peeping tom, but I see things from the windows. I called the warden and he said he would be right out, which he did. He came to our house, saw the hunters above the river line. And again, he took off and went down and these hunters had shot two ravens. They were not birds, but they were still illegal. They were cited for being on private land. They were cited for being above the high watermark and for getting the ravens. And I guess what disturbs me with the river at the present time is that we're all appalled by freeway shootings in Los Angeles by random gunmen. But here we have a river freeway coming down with many, many boaters. And we have shot, we have legal shooting on a recreational freeway. The third point is, although it's before we moved into the area, our immediate neighbor has had his windows pelted with shotgun pellets. We have not, he has. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this matter? Mr. Lovegrove.
My name is Bob Lovegrove. I'm president of the Western Montana Fishing Game Association. With regard to this ordinance, I think there are a couple things that I want to bring to your attention, one of which is that the preservation of the opportunity to deal with the expanding population of deer is very important. I think most of you are aware of the extent to which that's occurring. Give you an example, when I took my children to school this morning at 8:00, there was a deer and fawn wandering around on Rimrock looking for things to eat. I found deer droppings in the yard of an apartment that I have on Southwest Higgins. When I was serving as mayor, as I recall, Jack Reedy talked about a buck that was killed on Southwest Higgins by a vehicle. I hear complaints from people who live out west of town of seeing literally hundreds of deer at one time. Because there's no control and the whitetails are very prolific, we're going to have to deal with that situation at some point in time. And it's important that we maintain the opportunity to involve the hunter in that process in order to gain some control on the situation. Secondly, I would encourage you to discuss and make the residents of this area fully aware of the law enforcement aspects of this ordinance. Because while it's been on the books a long time, this is the first time that I have heard of an instance of the ordinance being enforced. And it's interesting to note that it was enforced by a state officer, not a city or a county officer. by a state officer, not a city or a county officer. So I think we don't want to create a false sense of security for these people and make them fully aware of, of how the ordinance can be enforced and what steps they should take in the event they observe a violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further testimony? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Rich Clough, that's C-L-O-U-G-H. I'm a regional supervisor for Fish, Wildlife and Parks, Region Two. I have been working with this group of people, Alice Austin represents the homeowners, in looking at the safety issues involved in that section of the Bitterroot River. After actually touring that area, looking at it, I feel there definitely is a safety concern, particularly in the McClay Bridge area. Some of the rest of the property, it's fairly open and should correct one thing here on the McClay Flats, that Forest Service development there, that hunting is allowable on there for archery as well as ducks if they are down within the high water mark. But I've been working with them, trying to identify areas that are, are definitely safety concern. I agree that there is more and more recreational activity occurring on that stretch of river and I, I also can see the need that, you know, in the near future, we're going to have to be considering restrictions, particularly McClay Bridge at this point. I would support that, that portion of the, of the ordinance as well as further study between Buck House and an area upstream of McClay. I would take that to our Fish, Wildlife and Parks Commission and ask that that be approved as well. We see this shrinking. I wish Mr. Boggs had been with the open space when we needed to protect some river corridors as well because this is not a unique situation. It's occurring statewide as developments occur along these major rivers and it's going to be a problem we deal with in the future almost statewide, not just in cities, but where the development is extensive such as along the Missouri, the Yellowstone and others. I hope to be working with the county commissioners in seeking an ordinance that will allow a setback away from the river to hopefully preserve those public rights to recreational use of those waterways and in a safe manner. I, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I should also relay that the incident referred to here where the hunters were cited, they were cited under our state laws, not under this ordinance because we were concerned whether we had authority to even enforce that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Clough? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further testimony? If there's not, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to be at the meeting next week. This, I'll be out of town and with the council's indulgence, I'd like to make just a short statement about this. I don't know if this is in order, in fact even in order, but this amendment was mine. I inserted it, had it inserted, inserted into this ordinance. At the time it passed, when the council's approval, it was, it was put in, into the ordinance. And as an avid big game and bird hunter and a member of Ducks Unlimited, I understand the need to preserve our hunting habitat and this amendment to the ordinance was mine. But times have changed in that area down there and with the, with the building of all the housing that has gone on down in there and the more people that have been put into that area, I would ask this council to look favorably upon the request by Mrs. Austin and remove this amendment from the ordinance, but do allow for control of the deer population in the area through special hunts as Mrs. Austin has asked and I would ask the council to do that next week.
I also had one closing comment. It's refreshing to see some of the people from the urban fringe here come to the city and ask the city to do something like this. We, it's especially refreshing when we're in the midst of a, an effort by some residents to disincorporate the city. I might point out that the reason that this request is made to the city is because the city has municipal ordinance-making powers which the county does not have and therefore would not be able to do this. We think that this is an urban issue and that it's appropriate for the city to act as it has here and we certainly appreciate your bringing your concerns to the city and we will act on it expeditiously. We apologize for the delay in bringing this matter before the council, but we do appreciate all of those who have spent your time here informing us about your concerns. We'll go on now to the final hearing, which is on an ordinance to generally revise and enact new land use fees for services provided by the Missoula Office of Community Development. Is there a staff report? Mr. Kress?
Mike Kress, Office of Community Development. All of you should have received a packet of materials in the council packet. I have also brought some extra copies which are available over on the counter on the desk as you come in the door and would also announce that anyone out in the listening audience or the viewing audience who would like copies of this information is welcome to come down to our office in City Hall and, and pick it up. What you have in front of you is the result of six, six-plus months of detailed case tracking, cost analysis with the assistance of the county auditor's office and discussions among the staff and the Missoula Planning Policy Committee. I would like to just make a few general comments first and then take, I hope it's not going to be much more than ten minutes to, to go through the proposal. The most recent fee revisions, with the exception of the subdivision fees that our office administers, was in nineteen eighty-two, so it's been a long time since we examined the fees we charge. Also, I wanted to point out that if this proposal is adopted, these, the Planning Policy Committee recommended that the entire package be reviewed within one year or following the adoption of the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance revision, whichever comes first. And finally, my last general comment is just that included in the packet is a, are sheets that show both city and counting, county existing and recommended fees. We are, we will be running this process through the county commissioner's office as well within the next couple of weeks and through a public hearing there. Your packets include on page one and two memos that discuss why this process was initiated, the criteria used to guide the fee revision process and a brief outline of, of three parts of it. Briefly, part one, which are sections one and two of the proposed ordinance, concerns sign fees and city subdivision fees. And I would just say, note that these will remain substantially unchanged. Our analysis that we conducted indicated that the fees are in line with the costs of performing the reviews. Part two, which is section three of the proposed ordinance in your packet, concerns what we call flat fees. These are, these are activities that often involve, can involve a significant amount of time or be fairly routine depending on the complexity of the, of the permit or application that's involved. The analysis indicated that in, in most areas, no fee or a minimal fee is currently charged and we are proposing new fees that would seek to recover a portion of the staff costs associated with those services. Section four of the proposed ordinance and the third part of it is entitled Fees for Discretionary Permits. The Planning Policy Committee here generally recommended that OCD develop a fifty percent cost recovery schedule for these services. And the columns in part three indicate the current fee, and this is in the city and county schedule of fees, not in the ordinance, the current fee, the average actual cost is determined through the case tracking, a proposed deposit, which I'll explain in a few minutes, and the maximum fee or ceiling that could be charged, an applicant could be charged. And then the remaining pages in the packet show the joint city-county fee schedule. As you are all aware, we've seen a dramatic increase in requests for service the last, this last year and, and the last couple of years in particular. This has been part of the reason that prompted us and the Planning Policy Committee and OCD to reexamine our current cost recovery rate and our fee schedule. The first step we did was with the assistance of the county auditor to analyze the relationship between the cost of services that we provide and the fees currently collected for these services. What the auditor found was that twenty-two percent of the actual cost for all OCD services is recovered through fees. The remaining seventy-eight percent is in, is in effect being underwritten through the use of the county, countywide planning mill which goes into the office and additional funding from the city council as well, which they put in every year. I, I know Chuck wouldn't let me get away with that, but we are sensitive to the needs and desires of the community. We did establish criteria to guide our fee revisions, which are included in the memo and I want to briefly go through those because I believe they are, they are crucial. I think one of the underlying philosophical basis for this, for this proposal was that whatever level of regulation this community desires in regard to land use, the fee should come closer to recovering the costs. So one of the criteria was the desire to make regulatory activities more self-sufficient through determining appropriate cost recovery and public subsidy levels. The other, another criteria was the desire to return the planning mill funds to planning activities. Because of the workload this spring, we were, for a time, we had to drop our planning activities strictly to recup, to focus and concentrate on the permitting activities. Another criteria was the desire to encourage development which will produce public benefits and further adopted community goals. Another criteria that was used in developing these was the desire to balance, number one, applicant ability to pay, number two, the scope and impacts of requested change, and three, the economic value of an application. For example, a homeowner requesting a setback variance to attach a garage to a single-family home versus a developer who requests a rezoning to place a commercial use on vacant land. The homeowner's means, project scope and impact would likely be substantially less than a developer's. And finally, the legislative mandate to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the community. I'd like to go through each of those parts that I mentioned in my introduction briefly. Section one, the sign fees, you will notice there's no change for the most part. Our analysis indicated that the costs were in line with the fees charged. The fees were in line with the costs incurred in issuing signed permits. One significant change, and this applies to all permitting activities, we are proposing that applications for permits while work is in progress or after completion of work be double fee. This is identical to what building inspection does. If someone begins building without getting their permits first, they are double fee. We are proposing the same method in, in our proposal. Section two, subdivision fees, as I mentioned, no change with, with one except, with one exemption, exception, and that concerns requests for extensions of, of preliminary plat approvals. We are, we charge, currently charge no fee or proposing a seventy-five dollar fee. These require a public hearing before the council. We need to advertise and notice those, so we're seeking to recover our costs and prepare a staff report in doing that. Section three is our, are the flat fees that I mentioned in the introduction. These include things like zoning compliance permits, vendor permits, seasonal use permits, certificate of occupancies, comprehensive plan compliance determinations, non-conforming use documentation and floodplain determinations. Once again, we are proposing a double fee for issuance of any permit while the work or after the work is, in progress or after the work has been initiated. A zoning compliance permit would include, to give you an example, would include someone seeking to locate a mobile home on a piece of ground. We currently charge five dollars, we're proposing a ten dollar increase to fifteen dollars. For multi-family, commercial and industrial zoning compliance permits, which would include such things, about the only example I can think of would be someone wanting to do a parking lot, proposing from five to forty dollars. I did want to point out that we are not proposing any change in the way we currently process building permits. In other words, if someone comes in with a building permit, it begins in the building inspection office, comes down to our office and while we are doing a, in some sense, a zoning compliance check, we currently recover those costs through billing the city and are not proposing any change in that. Vendor permits would also include a business license. I've had some questions from the treasurer's office about how this would work. Apparently for a vendor's permit, these are temporary. For a fourteen-day permit, they're allowed to, they can seek up to four extensions of those, at which time they become eligible for an annual permit. Our proposal would be for a one-time ten-dollar fee as long as they stay in the same location. Same with the business license, a one-time ten-dollar fee as long in the same location. If they move, this then triggers a requirement that we examine it, review it for zoning compliance, setbacks, parking, landscaping, other parts of the ordinance and we would initiate the fee. Seasonal use permits cover such things as Christmas tree stands, firework stands, proposing a twenty-dollar increase in those. I'm sorry, not fireworks in the city, excuse me. Christmas tree sales in the city. Certificates of occupancy, these do not apply to single-family dwellings. They apply to multi-family uses and, and up in intensity. In other words, uses where landscaping and parking requirements are triggered and this would enable us to make a final inspection to make sure those are, are in, so we don't end up dealing with them as a violation later on. Comp plan compliance would apply where no zoning exists. This primarily applies in the county. I wouldn't anticipate many of these in the city. Non-conforming use documentation, where someone is seeking to establish, for example, that they have a legal non-conforming rental in a property, we need to create a file, oftentimes have to do extensive research in PULC directories or other sources to compile a record that that has indeed been established. Floodplain determination, something we do not charge a fee for now. We receive several requests for this type of service from banks, title companies and realtors. We are proposing a fifteen-dollar fee for determinations that do not require any mapping and a thirty-dollar fee for those requiring mapping. Variance extensions, variances are good for a hundred and eighty days. You can request an extension on it. It has to go back before the Board of Adjustment. We're proposing a fifty-dollar fee where none was charged before. The final part of the ordinance are, is, concerns the fees for discretionary, discretionary permits. These are sought when an applicant or owner requests a deviation from requirements of the existing municipal code. These requests require discretionary action by the city of Missoula or its agents, the Board of Adjustment or Design Review Board. The following fees are, these fees will be collected using a deposit system. The fees are based on a fifty percent cost recovery rate. The fees are based on a 50% cost recovery rate and recover half the actual cost of preparing and executing the specified cases except where noted with an asterisk. The maximum fee will only be assessed if the actual cost of the project meets or exceeds twice that maximum fee. If an individual case costs less to prepare and execute than the deposit, the difference will be refunded to an applicant. I want to give you a couple of brief examples to explain, hopefully help clarify how this works. I've had several questions about how it will work, and I hope I can do that. If not, you can certainly hit me with questions afterward. For an example, I'll use the city board of adjustment. The deposit that we, the deposit required would be $150. Assuming the actual cost, and on all these discretionary permits, we will continue to use a detailed case tracking procedure. We will attach a sheet to each file. Staff will track its hours, copy costs, mileage costs, legal adds, et cetera, on that. If the actual cost comes to $200, we would assess the fee at 50% of that $200. This would mean, since the applicant has provided a $150 deposit, he would be entitled to a $50 refund. The total cost to the applicant then would be $100. A second example would, let's, and let's say it's a more complicated or controversial variance request, involve a lot more, agency input, put a lot more research on the staff's part, and more time spent responding to queries, providing analysis or information as a result of it. Let's say that, if applicant would begin, start off with a $150 deposit, then let's assume the actual cost came to $820. 50% of that cost would be $410. The additional monies required then would be $260. The applicant, total applicant cost would be $410. The $410 is our average actual cost then. We would go up to that maximum on it. Anything beyond that, the maximum cost to the applicant or ceiling would be $410. You'll see in the ordinance then, the other discretionary fees. Our attempt here was to set a deposit that was reasonable so that we wouldn't get into the business of having to be providing a lot of refunds, because that's a fairly complex procedure, not have to do that, but would not be, the deposit would not be so high that it would discourage people from initiating such a request or from applying for these things. At any rate, you'll see, again, say, the other fees, and I'll just briefly mention them, the other ones that are included under discretionary permit fees, say, board of adjustment, design review board, sign design packages, site design packages, boulevard variances, and conditional uses, city zonings and rezonings, commercial planned unit development rezonings, commercial liquor and beer overlays, and I would note here that we are, with commercial liquor and beer overlays, we're proposing setting the maximum fee at 100% of the average actual cost that was incurred. The reasoning on that was, I believe that a CLB permit, if purchased from the state, is something like $500. I think on the open market, they're worth about 50, I heard 55,000, I think, today that can be turned around and sold. It's like winning the lottery, it appears. The gain on this one is tremendous, and we felt it was justifiable to charge 100% of what our average actual cost is on that one. With that, I'm sure you all have plenty of questions. I will conclude my presentation and be interested to hear from other members of the audience, and if you have any questions at this time, I'll try and answer them if you want to do it later.
Mr. Hermes.
Mike, I understand that, you know, the increase in fees would help defer some of your costs. Do you think this will help slow down some of the permits that people are looking for? In that, they might think twice about it?
I don't believe it will slow anybody down. I think the deposit system is set low enough that it will not be prohibited. That's not necessarily our attempt, or the intent with this proposal either, is to slow things down. The attempt is to generate some increased revenue so that over the long haul, we will, like I said, be able to put regulatory activities more, on a more self-supporting basis, at any rate. And like I said, it's been eight, nine years since the last fee revision was considered.
Mr. Hermes.
How about increase in staff, then? Do you think with this in place, you'd be able to increase the staff level?
Well, the city and county have already provided us with some increase in staff. We have an additional halftime planner, additional halftime secretary, there'll be another additional planner, too, in the office in a while. This will hopefully, over the long haul, there is somewhat of a lag time with regard to these fees kicking in, and we had attempted to estimate, if this is something you assume, assuming the things keep going along as they have, and assuming that these fee revisions were in place within the next month or so, we had estimated that additional revenue this year, we would generate, we would capture somewhere between 1/3 to 1/4 of what we would get on an annualized basis from these new, from these revised fees, and that that would generate somewhere between $8,000 and $12,000. So we're looking at, over a year, we're going, we figure we're going to miss a lot of the building season this year, because we're coming in at the end of it, and miss a lot of that. But that, over, on an annualized basis, be some, the additional increase over what we get now in fees would be something in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say, $36,000 to $46,000.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Mike, where are we on our backlog? Have we made up any, have we made up any ground on the backlog, the waiting time that these permits take to get issued?
We have reduced our backlog considerably. I think we're within a three- to five-day period on most of our building permits, business licenses, requests for information. The zoning, rezoning process, we still have a backlog on.
Has it decreased, or is it still pretty much what it was?
The activity levels, in other words, the volume of applications, permits, et cetera, has continued, and as a matter of fact, I, it feels like it's increased because of our pleasant fall weather, that there's been a tremendous flurry of activity recently to get going and get indoors before it turns. That may, may end soon, depending on the weather.
With, with the money that the council and the county allocated to the Office of Community Development for the staff positions, are you going to be able, with that, with that funding, next year with these fee increases, are you going to be able to maintain that staff level and maintain a level of activity in the Office of Community Development so we don't have this back, so this backlog disappears and we don't re-incur it without more funding from the county and the city?
That's my hope. The one unknown factor is a turnover. For example, we hired, I've already hired, I have hired halftime assistant planner, the halftime secretary, however, I had a planner, one who was gone. And that, so now we're, you know, that kind of thing I can't predict.
Right.
But we should be in better shape to respond to those day-to-day requests with this. And we are, we are now, with the increased staff, we received on a temporary basis this year, and with the council, city and county's authorization for additional funding, we have decreased that backlog.
And you do see that as a probability?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Mrs. Schaefer.
I need some definitions for a vendor permit and the seasonal use permit. I'm thinking of the little coffee sandwich wagons. Is that what you mean by vendor, the street vendors? Or anybody that sells anything is technically a vendor, so I'm not sure who needs to get this permit.
Right. I think this would primarily be triggered by whoever needs a business license, because on the back of the business license application is a sign off for zoning, compliance. They have to go to zoning, fire, police, health. We have things that, there are, as I understand it, in my conversation with the treasurer's office, a person can apply for a 14-day vendor's permit, and they can do that up to four times. After they do it for four consecutive 14-day periods, they can purchase an annual permit, vendor's permit. We're proposing a one-time $10 fee. In most cases, they stay in the same location, the ones that I'm familiar with. I don't know how the treasurer's office deals with things like a mobile cart or whatever.
Other questions, Mrs. Schaefer?
No.
Mr. Rice.
You also asked about seasonal permits, I'm sorry.
Well, most of those open.
Christmas tree stands.
Well, most of those open wagon-type park things are seasonal. They're only there in the warm weather, and I didn't know which, which one would they need to get.
We would consider probably, if it's a 14-day permit, it's a, it'd be a vendor permit. If they're talking about, I mean, the only seasonal ones I'm aware of are, again, are the Christmas tree sales in the city and in the county, those, and the firework stands that we consider seasonal.
Mr. Rice.
I believe on the application for a business license, there is a section for people to fill in for where they intend to locate their mobile units if they should so decide to be a street vendor, so that, and that is the basis on which a review of those permits is done. Mike, I have a couple pretty rudimentary questions, but they're, I think, maybe of some concern. First of all, I think this is a simple question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On the double fee situation, you say, "application for permit while work is in progress or after completion of work." I'm presuming that if you should stumble upon a sign that has gone up and for which there is no permit, that constitutes a de facto application at that point? In other words, that would be a double fee situation?
Yeah.
Does not require a formal application on the part of the person who did not purchase the permit to begin with? In other words, it does not require, this is the result of either a regulatory action or a, somebody coming in not realizing that they had a permit, had to get a permit? Get what I'm saying? Got two different issues here.
If I understand, and correct me if I don't, this would apply in the instance where, say, someone had put up a sign, did not obtain the necessary permit, and it was discovered through an investigation. Sometimes, things get referred to our office through building inspection, which will put a stop-work order on if they see construction going on and a permit has not been issued, and if any of our permits are required, they double fee them when they come in for their building permit. If a sign's involved, we would double fee them for that, or if we uncover it in the course of a violation investigation.
So in other words, it is the, the application, the question is, what does application mean here? And I think you've answered it. The application can either be at the behest of the property owner, the owner, or as a result of an investigation.
Yes.
So, but, that's, I don't know whether that's clear to some of the other people who are listening, but I think it should maybe be spelled out that it may be the result of some sort of regulatory action. I have a, I guess, it's more of a managerial question about the way in which the sliding fees or the discretionary permits are assessed. And you answered, I think, the first question, the first part of my question pretty well, and that is that, about what you, the lower limit of the deposit, or the deposit is set sort of at the lower range of the permit, so that generally, that's going to be pretty close to what the cost of the permit is to eliminate refunds. I guess the question I have is, how, what is it going to cost us to track the fees? And you've already pretty much answered that by saying you're already tracking it, which is good. I think that's the answer to that question. The question that sort of follows from that is, how will we collect fees which are owed, say, following a board of adjustment action? What is the mechanism going to be?
Our, in our discussions with the Planning Policy Committee, we talked about a couple things in terms of point of collection. One, the deposit would be submitted, of course, with the application, much as currently, for example, we require the fee at the beginning of the process. The difference would be, whether it be a refund, or in other words, additional revenue that might be required, we would require prior to the public hearing, that it be issued, we would compute that and require it to be included at that point.
So it would then occur before any action was taken on the request by, either the, that would be before it went to the board of adjustment, in the case of a board of adjustment action, or before it went to the planning board?
Before it went to the, I believe, the governing body in that case.
So in other words, it could, in fact, in a board of adjustment case, that would be before it went to the board of adjustment, and in the case of a zoning issue, before it went to either the county commissioners or the council.
Yes, and one additional comment, the suggestion was also made by the attorneys, I believe this was the deputy county attorney, that we include some contractual language in the application that would identify that they would pay the deposit and would pay the difference, spell that out prior to the public hearing. We have not had a problem with being stiffed on fees. That was a, it's a point of concern during this, that the fees would be so high if we charged the actual cost, the average actual cost that we, that were incurred during our case tracking, that people would, what if someone were to just, they'd get a high fee, they had a real controversial case, and they said, "Well, I didn't get it, I'm not going to pay." I think the, you know, the maximum fee would, I don't think in most cases, going to be so high that that would happen.
Any other questions?
Like I said, it's not been a problem.
I think I see some budding journalists here having second thoughts about their chosen careers. Try to move along here. Any other questions for Mike? Any other testimony?
This will probably put all doubt in those journalists' minds to rest right now. In fact, I was going to say, you kind of like this time of the night in this council chambers, because it's like students that are stuck and people that are real addicted to governmental affairs in the room. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Owen. I am representing the board of directors of the Chamber of Commerce. A continual, lighter note, I will tell you that this note that I have was real concise an hour and a half ago when I walked in here, and the longer Mike talked, the more notes I made, and it looks more like my shopping list now than it does testimony, but we'll respect your time if we can. We were here in a crisis atmosphere months ago, talking about the willingness of the business community and development community to accept higher fees. We are here now to support that and make some broader comments. We are here now to support that and make some broader comments. Chamber supports the new fees. We also applaud the philosophy that has a 50% balance in fees and said that we would do that, and I think that's important for two reasons. As noted in the philosophical statement, there is a mandate by law to protect the public welfare in a broader focus, and there is a public stake in these, accurately reflected with 50% to the public's involvement in the cost. Second, and I think this is important for the future, one of the concerns brought up to me by some of the business people, was that if you're charging 50% of the fees and the meter's running, what's the incentive to keep City Hall from just having a longer process, more involved, more costs? Well, the balance is represented in 50%, so while you might bring in more revenue to a limit, you're also driving up your own costs. And if this was a full-cost fee, or it was an 80%, then there might be an incentive to have that process elongated. This does represent a true partnership with the business community, making a significant investment. As you review the fees, and I did some counting, keep in mind, I'm a basketball referee, 10s as high as I'm ever challenged to go. There are 52 fee revisions on several of the sheets, two of which propose deposits or fees that are lower. That's always appreciated. Fifteen of these deposits or fees stay approximately the same. Twenty-seven of these fees represent at least a doubling of fees, most of them a tripling of fees, or they require fees where none existed previously. The balance of those are fees that only went up 50%. With one exception, the maximum fees would represent a increase of at least three times, totaling in some cases additional fees from history of well over $1,000. I have a personal exception, based on my understanding of the business community's attitude, not necessarily on discussions with the Board of Directors, on the attitude towards the CLB. Mr. Kress is absolutely accurate in saying that this is a great lottery when you get one of the ones from the state. You have also been submitted to a process that was perceived to be driven by the state, where people who had their zoning were perceived to be in an advantageous position. Apparently, some of that's been cleared up. But before we see this as a get-it-and-grab-it, 'cause someone's getting rich scheme, let me tell you that that doesn't happen very often, and that you may be faced with people who need CLB overlays if you continue those after the zoning rewrite, who are in fact paying that $50,000, who aren't getting the one granted from the state that turns into instant riches. This policy will be applied across the boards. So, I encourage you to examine that philosophy carefully, because it is the exception rather than the rule that these licenses move in that fashion. I applaud the council's willingness to examine these fees, as well as the business community's willingness to stake their claim to help solve the problem. I've witnessed over 10 years in this community and other communities how hard it is for political bodies to increase fees. Imagine, if you will, increasing parking fines from $2 to $6, doubling sewer fees on residents, and increasing taxes to this extent. I've watched the business community's willingness to increase their fees and admired that willingness because they are committed to finding a solution. I do leave you, however, with a warning. In implementing these fees, you are creating expectations that the Office of Community Development will return to normal. Now, having said that, I'll answer the first question myself. I'm not sure what that means, given 10 years here. But we will at least peek down someplace from the crisis that brought us here. I've heard the revenue projections for this year, and I remind the council that the council said that they would stake the start of this cash flow, and the county commission agreed to put in some money so that some of the staffing could be answered. It was a crisis atmosphere that brought the willingness to pay fees, and it was a crisis atmosphere focused mainly on enforcement. The mayor and several others commented about the need to continue planning. One of the goals in the philosophical statement talks about returning the planning mill to the planning function. We need to talk about the community's investment in the planning function, that is absolutely The conditions that drive developers to respond by doing subdivisions and multifamily are real and tangible, and they are going to happen. The balance is, can we get the fees appropriate? Because it's not that these things won't happen here, because people want to live in Missoula, and if there is any economic opportunity for them at all, they will be here. But if it's not here, it will be in Lola, or Frenchtown, or just beyond the reach of the county commission, or someplace. Your job is to balance, plan, and prepare for that. But it is real, it is not created out of greed, it is responded to because of demand. And our balance as a community is to respond to that in some fashion that accommodates in most a cost-effective manner. Focusing on the people who respond to that demand is accurate within limited extent. Let me abandon pretty language to say clearly, if most of this money fulfills the philosophical goal of returning to planning, i.e. if all of a sudden, the redo of a two- or three-year-old comprehensive plan in the rattlesnake becomes headlines, and we're still having troubles getting zoning, the atmosphere of cooperation that brought this business community to accept two and three and four and five times increased fees will be dead. We need to be very careful. Most of the rhetoric was about fees, regulations, timelines, and zoning, very little of the rhetoric. It was well-stated, but it was quiet, was about returning to the planning function. As we do that, we need to talk about the community investment and the best way to do that. We have found a way to fund enforcement function. It's been an exciting first step, it's been an exciting partnership, very responsible action by both this body, and I think this business community, it's been a pleasure to be associated with it. We would encourage you to give favorable consideration to proposal.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Owen? If not, is there any further testimony? Mr. Lovegrove?
My name is Bob Lovegrove, I live at 825 Park BuA. I've been involved with the Chamber in their activities associated with the Office of Community Development, this being one of them. I also work with the Realtors in a similar capacity, however, I'm here tonight representing neither, but only myself. I think most of you know me to be a licensed real estate broker presently with Lambros Real Estate. Just a few quick points with regard to this, in reviewing this proposal with Mike this afternoon, and I wanna extend my appreciation for his, taking his lunch hour to do so with us. We identified what appeared to be an inconsistency with regard to the application of some of the flat fees, in terms of their being incurred, if, if the process is initiated through OCD, but that there, they, those fees would be picked up by the city if the process was initiated through the Building Inspection Office. You might wanna review that, and I'm sure Mike can make that issue clear to you, and perhaps suggest a way to, to deal with that issue. Secondly, and I didn't have a chance to review this in any detail until after we met today, but in looking at the criteria for setting these fees, putting the cap on them at, at a certain point is not consistent with your criteria. And I would suggest that you, if you don't remove that cap, that you monitor the number of dollars that are incurred by the taxpayers as compared to the applicant, and determine whether or not it's in the public's interest that those costs be paid for by the public. And in fact, there could be justification, because most likely, these costs would be associated with, in many instances, commercial development, and the offsetting benefit may be job creation, and which is certainly justification for the public's absorption of those costs, but I just bring that to your attention. I would encourage you to pass this from the standpoint that with I-105, this sort of thing, increases in fees, is consistent with a step toward more self-supporting governmental activities, and I think is going to be, have to be continued if government is going to be responsive to the public in the way that, that it has come to expect. And in that vein, I would encourage you to be sure that you allocate these revenues back to the purposes from which they come. And as one final note, that's somewhat ironic, that is the fact that these fees are going to be working against affordable housing in the city of Missoula, because it will increase the cost of development. And I would suggest that you might wanna consider waiving these fees, or having the public assume them, for anyone who would put such a development together for the benefit of that sector of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovegrove.
Mayor Kimison, council members, I'm Ralph Kircher, K-I-R-S-C-H-E-R, of 3922 Belchris Drive. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Missoula Building Industry Association, which has had the opportunity throughout this process to consider the fee increases and to talk with Mike Kress and other people in the Office of Community Development, to get a better understanding of the need for the fee increases and how these proposed fees would be implemented. And I want to applaud Mike and his staff for their willingness to be open and upfront with us on how they're approaching this philosophically, as well as how they're trying to implement the proposed fees. I think it's been a difficult process from the standpoint of, throughout this past year, I think OCD has been faced with some moving priorities. And I think at times, they thought they were going in one direction, and then were pushed possibly into other directions, which diverted time and staff to accomplish some of the things that they were mandated to do. And I think it's important that we recognize that in order to administratively handle some of these things, that firm priorities need to be set forth to accomplish certain goals. I also think in this fee process, we can't lose sight of the regulatory process and the public health, welfare, and safety of the community at large. We don't want to create disincentives through increased fees, we want people to comply and to be open and come forward and, and be willing to pay those fees. I think that these proposed fees are conducive for that. I do not see them at this time as being a disincentive, but I think it's important that the council consider that, if there are considerations for future changes in these, to have a higher cost recovery. Also, I think Mr. Lovegrove touched on a very important part about the affordability. Again, these proposed fees need to be kept in line with that objective. After having gone through the process, many meetings through the budgetary process, as well as, as more recently on this proposed ordinance, the Missoula Building Industry is in support of the proposed fees, with the caveat that Mr. Owen discussed previously, that in fact, these proposed fees be utilized and achieve the objectives that they're being used for. As a result, I would request that the council consider favorably these proposed fees at this time, and I look forward to, as I know the other members of the building industry are, to working with the council and the OCD in the future if, if any of these problems are reoccurring. Thank you.